Let's go. Okay, excuse me. Good evening. It's six p.m. July 1st. Before I open this. For tonight. Like this media televised live on cable channel eight. It all rise to say the pleasure. Okay, next. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda item? Tonight, if so, please check in with. And to my left and three minutes to make your comment. Anybody I have been it's not the agenda. Okay, thank you. Moving forward. Uh, I'd like to ask the public, um, I will reach. A public single, uh. One second. Sorry. Every uh, presentation we reach out to the comment. Just speaking halfway through the meeting. And we close to the meeting. Didn't do so feel free to speak up. I'm hoping that's gonna happen. Historically, don't forget, but if I do feel free to remind. Next. So sit tonight on first, well, first ex- presumably. Meeting will be five. Five regular board meetings, uh, members. So having so that, uh, I'd like to read first thirty seven Amy Brown Road. Our first continue here. George.
Continue hearing. Thirty seven Amy Brown Road owner Brian W. Request special permit under one seventy four dash seventeen point one. In section one seven four dash seventeen and one seventy four thirty three. The previous ninety nine family structure. Plays with a new family. Presidential structure and detached garage located in three district map one oh nine. Number four. On May twenty second, twenty two thousand twenty. July first, two thousand twenty four to. Hearing until July twenty four, two thousand twenty four hearing.
Costler.
Evening. Chairman. Of our company. Is the owner of thirty seven Amy Brown Road. Uh, we have right today. In July twenty fourth meeting. Uh, we're waiting on the actual. Uh, hired K Marshall. Who know a lot of you familiar with fans. Should have them ready by the Friday before the next meeting. So we should be on track.
So you're asking for the. Until.
July twenty.
Is that acceptable to Mary Ann? Yes, so to make a motion that we.
Motion that we, uh, accept attorney. Motion to. Uh, continue to the twenty.
All those are favorite.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now continue public hearing eighty four, please. Would you like to read that, George?
Sure.
Oh, all right. You will not be sitting on this. People sitting on this. Will be four regular. And Scott will be stepping down. After you sign this document.
Doesn't matter what you say.
No, there's no signature line for individual person. The standard sig- extension for.
Seven ten. Twenty four.
Twenty one.
Okay, again Scott will be stepping down in the next hearing, which will be eighty four punk point. Vote and the people sitting on this will be four regular members and George. So George, would you like to read eighty four punk point? To the, uh. Record, please.
Eighty four punk point road owners Robert Allen Wolfie and Michelle A. Will be requesting the written finding under section one seventy four dash seventeen. In section one seventy four dash thirty three, designing bylaws to allow. For two, two additions. Attached. Upper located in part three. Three zone district map one hundred. So five. You may. Continued from eight second to twenty four hearings at the request of.
You and I may have to share because there's only three left. Call.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman of the Board Attorney Christopher. Representing Robert and Michelle Wolfie, owners of property eighty four Punkhorn. Punkhorn Point Road. As noted in the public hearing notice, we have filed a petition for written. Under one seventy fourteen team, uh, three things. As you can. Receiving. Full of this. One year, one year to the single family. Pool. The type of structure. This position. Exist. Where Jack is now. Uh, any more footprint. Uh, the house. Uh, despite. Well, there's some, uh, course from, uh, from. Day. Not is conforming that is not the case. If you look at. Not Cape. Raoul is here Cape and Island. The house. Here. But the distance is thirty seven point nine feet off. Uh, Punkhorn Point Road. That is a nonconforming condition. The requirement is forty feet. Pool is also nonconforming. It is thirty five point six feet off Punkhorn Point Road. That's also a form condition. Um, the lot is partially by the phone. We have nine thousand five hundred nine square feet. That is. Condition and also less than fifty from the west. For the. And so that is also. The. Existing. Uh. Lot coverage is twenty three point eight percent. And it's.
And take that into account. So next that, right, those issues. Are you, there's no new nonconforming beyond that?
No, that is correct.
Okay.
My understanding of the letter is that we have a nonconforming situation that's legally nonconforming is what he's saying.
Well, I think it's important that you.
Right.
You want, do you want us to read it to you again, Judge? Just want to make certain there's no new nonconformities.
Because we're not, we're not creating anything new. So on the house that is, we already, the house is already nonconforming, we're less than forty feet. We're not create, we're not, again, it's less than forty feet, it's already nonconforming. And then the pool is nonconforming already. And then the cabana is also to the front yard setback nonconforming. So there's nothing new that's a nonconformity.
How far, how far is the cabana from the street?
It's, well, I'll tell you this, it's eighteen feet from the lot line, but Punkhorn Road is not, doesn't go all the way out, but.
Okay, so if we, if we take that out of the equation.
Yeah.
What's the closest to the street?
If you take the cabana out.
Right.
Uh, thirty seven point nine.
So you're going from thirty seven point nine to eighteen feet?
For the cabana, that's correct.
So you're going closer.
Yes.
Both preexisting nonconforming.
Right, I understand that, but it's also going closer.
That is correct.
Well, the question that makes me ask then is the cabana, is the cabana a setback component?
In my, in my opinion, the cabana is like a shed.
Well, that's why, that's the question, is the cabana.
How big is it?
It's sixteen by sixteen.
Say it again.
Sixteen by sixteen. So if you look at the.
So it's over a hundred and twenty square feet.
It is. So if you look at the plans, I don't know if you have the, it's, it's a, it's like a fire fireplace with a roof with a grill. I mean, as I said, it's really a glorified, um, you know, landscape feature.
Did you discuss the cabana with the building, the zoning enforcement officer?
I did not personally, but I believe he had the plans, K Marshall did.
Is there any reason why you can't move it further away? Put it, it's a big lot.
No, I know, but it, it's part of, it's supposed to be part of the pool. Okay, so you can't, you'd have to go, conservation wants it as far away from the conservation resource. So that's why it's on this side. And you can't put it over here because there's no pool over here. I mean, the cabana is complimentary to the pool.
Yeah, why, okay, why don't you put it between the house and the pool?
Well, you couldn't fit it there.
I don't think there's no.
Or make it small.
Well, you, it wouldn't be, oh, I understand what you're saying, but it would, it'd be, it'd be useless if you made it any smaller to fit there. You only have about. Seven, you know, ten feet. You wouldn't be able to fit anything there and you wouldn't be able to access it.
Well, it's a pretty big house. I'm not sure they really need it. I mean. Look at the size of it. How big's that house?
The house?
Big house.
Probably, uh. Know. Well, the lot coverage overall is forty six hundred square feet. I think that includes the pool, so.
I mean, the, what is it, about five, six bedroom house? Just looking at it, I don't, I have no idea.
But again, we're not adding, the, the cabana doesn't add any bedrooms, it's simply allows.
I understand, but you're making the situation worse, going closer to the street. So you're setting a precedent.
We're not setting any precedent, this board has.
Sure you are.
Has allowed things to get closer to streets.
From thirty seven feet to eighteen feet.
This board has approved projects that have gotten closer to setbacks when they're nonconforming.
Okay.
And again, you look at this, this lot is the last one on the road, there's nobody across the street, it's, it's not impacting anybody.
Well, the question that, that for me needs to be answered, and I'm concerned that I don't have someone to answer here today, is, is a cabana considered a structure to be included in setback? Now, I understand, it sounds like there's a member of this board that wants to consider it that way, and he certainly has a right to do that, and he may vote. In that manner, that's up to his, that's his choice, but understand, it sounds like that's what's gonna happen.
Sure.
And so I'm concerned about lot coverage when you went from the way the board does it, the old way, to twenty five point.
No, 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 that's the new, that's the new way. The old way. The old way is seven point seven to eight point two.
So that, so tell me the new way then.
The new way is twenty three point eight to twenty five point four.
So it, so what's the maximum lot coverage in that zone?
Twenty percent. Right.
So you're expanding on a noncon, uh, preexisting nonconformity, right?
Correct, yes. We are.
So I guess the next question that needs to be asked is what other expansions of preexisting nonconformities are you, are you, uh, intending to or trying to perform?
So there are three additions to the property. So these two are wholly within existing footprint.
Yeah.
So they're not.
So again, expansion preexisting, so what?
I get the cabana, I mean, they are technically an expansion because you're, you're getting, you're still within the zero feet to the wetland resource area.
I understand that one. Give me the ones that you know that I'd be, you understand.
It's the cabana.
Just the cabana.
Just the cabana.
And lot coverage.
Correct.
Anything else?
No. But, but the pool is nonconforming too.
See, counterintuitive here, I'm sitting here saying, all right, so I'm, I'm listening to Jonathan, I'm sitting there saying, all right, size of the house, so we're expanding a nonconformity, lots of coverage, and.
And the front yard setback.
Members unhappy about a cabana. You put those two together. It's a problem.
Yeah, we're, we're intensifying two nonconformities.
Which, which lot coverage is, I get it, but that's something our townspeople are, I've been very much concerned about, and this board is concerned about too. So we're expanding on a preexisting nonconformity, lot coverage, which is pet peeve of this board.
Right.
And we have a cabana that is, uh, possibly, uh, creating a new nonconformity, possibly.
Right. Well, I, again, I don't think it's creating a.
It's a huge lot.
I mean, the location is, you know, it is what it is. I mean, I don't think that they, they can't.
No, I get it, I get it.
They can't put it over there, you know, you're gonna impact conservation if you put it over there.
I would, as one member, I would be less concerned if you were not increasing on a preexisting nonconformity, which is lot coverage.
So if we made the, if we shrunk the cabana.
I don't think you're gonna get back into not expanding a preexisting nonconformity by any, by doing anything to cabana.
Let me ask the question, if you didn't have a cabana, what would, what would be there?
Well, the cabana is sixteen, sixteen by sixteen, so.
I don't think you're gonna get back to where your lot coverage was before.
No, because all, all they're doing is enclosing what's already there.
Yeah.
Those are the other two projects. That's not affecting anything.
Right.
Regarding lot coverage.
Totally with you on it.
The cabana is two hundred and fifty six square feet.
Yeah.
How's, how big's the lot again?
So the lot, if you take out the flood zone, the lot is sixty thousand, sixty one, almost sixty one thousand square feet. But you have to remove, you have to remove the flood zone for zoning purposes.
We got it.
And the lot's nineteen thousand square feet for zoning purposes.
Yeah.
It's huge, nineteen thousand.
One of the larger lots we've dealt with.
Maybe, but it's still, it's still undersized.
We, we've got it, but it, again, being tried, I'm concerned that we're increasing in nonconformity, preexisting nonconformity, which is lot coverage, which is, I'm not liking it, and now we've got, now we've got the cabana issue. So for me, I'm not so sure I can go along with, with that.
Well, the only thing I would.
The combination of the two.
Right, the only thing I would say about the cabana, again, if you look at, if we take the lot as a whole, as under the old way, we are well under lot coverage, we're going from seven point seven to eight point two.
Understood, but then you have to look at it, the existing zoning way. Which you are then, you are increasing a preexisting nonconformity.
Which is not, which is allowed.
Well, subject to this board.
Well, understood, understood, correct.
Yeah. Please.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, as opposed to like a raise and replace where, where it says, no new nonconformities can be created, which really takes away the discretion of the board.
I totally concur.
The board has discretion to allow the intensification.
This board would have the discretion to say to you, it's acceptable, and I'm saying to you, we are very much in tune to lot coverage.
Correct.
And have been for some time.
Right.
And so when you go over, when you increase that nonconformity, this board's gonna be concerned.
Right, well, I guess if this lot was wholly within flood zone, we would say a hundred percent to a hundred percent.
I get it.
You know, so it's, you know, we're in this little quirky situation where the whole lot's not in the flood zone. So we, we give you the true calculations, but again, the overall coverage of the sixty thousand square foot lot is only eight percent.
Understood.
I think, I think under, under their application, we have to determine whether it's more detrimental than what previously existed to the neighborhood.
Correct.
Understood.
And my, you know, my argument is, is that when we're looking at the overall lot coverage, that's only eight percent to the sixty thousand square feet, how is that substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And given the fact that this is the last lot on Punkhorn Point, or last house on Punkhorn Point Road. There's nobody across the street, and, you know, again, we're talking about a, you know, a cabana, we're not talking about a new habitable structure.
I'm not so sure the last lot is part of the, of an argument that, that would make sense to me. Again, my only concern is increasing the lot coverage, that, that's a little concerning.
Unfortunately, there's, that'd be, that would basically mean you can't do anything with this lot right now.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not saying that.
Without decreasing the size of the house.
What's the lot coverage right now that exists today?
Twenty three something.
Based on the flood zone.
It's based on the existing zoning, so yeah, utilizing to removing the flood zone, what's the lot coverage today?
If I remove the flood zone.
Yeah.
It's twenty three percent.
So the zoning set, zoning is twenty percent.
Correct. So this board. We wouldn't be able to expand the house, anything.
Well, well, maybe the board would sit there and say, you know what, twenty four percent, but there's maybe a number that the board would be acceptable, maybe the board's acceptable at twenty five point, whatever you're, you're acceptable, you're, you're pointing forward, I don't know.
But again, that's why I give the board the, kind of the old way calculation to say.
I get it, and it makes sense, we require that anyways, just so we can understand, I get it.
And we're not even close, I mean, we're not even pushing up against the twenty percent if you look at it that way.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it, I get that.
And again, if we take the cabana as complimentary to the pool, which it is, the pool is nonconforming at less than forty feet. So again, yes.
Totally understand that too.
We are, you know, we are getting closer to the road, but again, we're getting closer to the lot line, Punkhorn Point Road is, doesn't extend, I mean, it's a, it's a, you know.
Don't go, don't go there, please. You know how I feel on those issues. Leave that alone.
But, you know, again, you know, as I say, the board's charges is it gonna be more, you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighbor than what currently exists. You have two neighbor letters who say that it's not, you know, that they're full support of it as well.
Totally get that too, and that, that is a, that is a positive from your application standpoint. So that being said, anyone else on this board have comments?
I do.
Yes.
We've heard dozens of cases where. Properties have been one hundred percent in the flood plain. So they're at a hundred percent lot coverage to begin with. And if this were in a hundred percent in the flood plain, it would be the same thing. And then we would look as a board, but if there were, under the old rules, what would it go from and to? And in my understanding, it's going from seven to eight.
Right.
Right. And I for one. Know that we've ruled dozens of times. If they're doing something going from seven to eight under the old rules. We've kind of let that pass.
That's just my comment.
Understood. Sharon, you have anything to say?
I just think the cabana was huge, but.
So.
And it, well, see, is it considered a shed? And even if it's a shed.
Well, it's over a hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah.
Right, so the shed, the, the bylaw affects shed over a hundred and twenty square feet, those is like setbacks, so if it's under a hundred and twenty square feet, you can be up to five feet from the lot line. If it's over hundred, you know, I guess it would have to.
What is a shed if it's all oversized?
Well, it requires footings, correct?
Then, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
If it's over two hundred, it's gotta be the standard setback.
Yeah, you need to, yeah, get your building.
It would seem to me, and I'm not speaking for this board, I'm speaking from what I'm hearing. At this point in time, it would seem to me if you struck the cabana for tonight. Always come back later. You might be in a better position. Am I sounding, making sense?
Well, let me, let me, uh.
If you just strike off the cabana. You might get into a better place than you're at right now. Now, I have not heard from the audience, and there's a couple other things we have to do here, so I'm speaking prematurely.
Sure. Well, why don't we do this, why don't you go to the audience, I'll have a chance to talk to my client and see how he wants to proceed.
Okay, so anyone in the audience like to speak about this application? Yes. Uh, give your name, address, and your involvement in the project, please.
How you doing Chairman? Matthew Haney, I'm the trustee SN Trust, we're the abutters, and I'm also the trustee Gooseberry Island Trust, we're also the abutters. Um, I want to address a couple things right off the bat. Mr. Crane said there's no one across the street, that's total nonsense. Uh, there's two houses across the street. Uh, eighty seven Punkhorn Point Road and eighty five Punkhorn Point Road. Uh, so they're, if you look at the plan here, and I brought their A and R plan, just in the front edge, you can see here, so this little marker right here. Is right down here. So it's a house here, a house here. That's, so I just wanted to bump that claim that there was nobody across the street. The other issue is, we're, we drive down this road here, this road, before it was called Punkhorn Point Road, it used to be called the Road Gooseberry Island, the road's been there for hundreds of years, it's the axis of Gooseberry Island.
Mr. Haney, you need to speak into the mic, just so we have TV.
Just pull it out here?
Yeah, I think you can pull it out, there you go. You got it.
Okay. All right, so SN Trust owns all the marsh right here, so we have to drive by this road, we go down the road to access the SN, SN Trust Marsh, and also Gooseberry Island is right here, so we drive by down this road to access Gooseberry Island. The town of Mashpee is taking the position that's actually a public way. Um, I have the, the plan, this file, the town clerk, and it shows Punkhorn Point Road is a public way. The road is thirty three feet wide, the layout, plus is an additional ten feet wide utility easements on both sides of the road. But you can see from, I didn't print out the full plant, like the full size, but you can see it's full, it's shrunk down here, but it says, you know, propose, these are the proposed roads, I, you know, public, sorry, proposed roads. Public and historic ways in the town of Mashpee, January nineteen eighty six, and it shows public way, road. And you can see, this is filed the town clerk's office, May twenty first nineteen eighty six, Mashpee Town Clerk. And you can see, this is blown up, Punkhorn Point Road. So you can see, the town takes the position, it's a. Yeah, okay, thank you. And so this road is heavily used, um, the other thing that people use this road for is, it's a fisherman's landing at the other road. It's an access point for the Wampanoag tribe to get to Pappanasse Bay to exercise their Aboriginal rights to go fishing, shell fishing, you know, they use the, the landing down there. So it is a heavily used road, um, the setback requirements are forty feet. And I'm gonna get into some of this stuff here. So, give you a little background here, this house is built in nineteen ninety nine, two thousand. It came from front of this board for a variance, and it came from front of this board for a variance for the fire protection. And one of the issues we have is, this cabana they talked about is not really like a suntanned cabana, it's quite the structure, if you look at the plans, they're very detailed. You know, they have a kitchen, you know, I think it's a bar, looks like an outdoor entertainment establishment, so it's not just like a shed. You know, it's a, it's a, it's an entertainment, it's a kitchen, and the issue we have is they're pushing this thing farther away from the paved road, closer to SN's property in Gooseberry Island. And under the, under the zoning bylaw, so, and I don't know if you got, you guys got my letter here from April twenty first thousand twenty four? You guys got a copy of that, anybody read it? No? Nobody read this?
I'm concerned, you sent a letter to this board.
Yeah, the rest of you, it was in the file, I saw it this afternoon, Mary Ann.
We should make sure that gets read into the record.
Okay.
We should read that in the record.
Matt, would you like to read it?
The whole thing here?
You can read it, then it's read into the record, you can do the DASL.
The whole excuse me, I'm a product of Boston Public Schools here.
Okay.
All right, I'm kidding, all right, so this is April twenty, this is from Matthew Haney. April twenty first, two thousand twenty four, Ron Bonby, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, sixteen Grayneck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. O two six four nine, re eighty four Punkhorn Point Road. Dear Chairman Bonby, please be advised that I am the trustee SN Trust and Gooseberry Island Trust, which are abutters to the above referenced property. We understand as of May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, the applicant has not provided any additional information or revised plans. Based on the following, the Zoning Board of Appeals lacks the authority to grant the petition. Now, and I, I could, I could sort of summarize. I don't want to read this whole thing, you guys, unless you want me to.
Well, that's up to you. You're the one who sent the letter. I want to make sure it's part of the record.
Yeah, I'll summarize like the, and I'll quote different things.
It's up to you whether you want to read it all. I just want to make sure that you have the right and the ability to make this part of the record.
No, I understand that. Thank you. So, um, the first part of the letter gets into the definitions of nonconforming structure, and this is important. So, section 174-3, terms defined, "Nonconforming structure is a lawfully existing structure that does not conform to the dimensional requirements prescribed by the, by this chapter and for the district in which it is located, but which was lawfully in existence at the time the dimensional requirements which it does not conform became effective." And this is critical, because, you know, up until 2016, the Massachusetts Acts of, uh, Chapter 184, uh, they changed the zoning. They added another section, and I actually believe, um, the building commissioner touched on in his letter-
Forty-eight, Section 7.
Yeah, but he, he misspoke. It's not, um, it's 10 years. Uh, he said six in his letter. It's actually 10. It's six years with a building permit, uh, 10 years with no building permit for a structure, but then, then they have in there 10 years, it becomes a legally nonconforming structure. But this is critical. In the statute, it says, uh, "Subject to Section 6 and any local ordinance or bylaw relating to nonconforming structures." So, whatever Mashpee has in the zoning bylaw for nonconforming structures come into play. That add-on additional amendment, when they changed the, uh, in 2016, when the legislative updated Chapter, um, 48, Section 7, they put clearly in there that, you know, anything that's been there for 10 years, that hasn't had enforcement actions, it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure, subject to Section 6 and any local zoning bylaws from the local municipality.
So, you're stating that was never a building permit pulled in reference to this, to this house?
There was a building permit pulled in, for the house, but the issue is now all-
But then it would be six years.
But, but then, but, no, no, it would be six years, but that doesn't automatically make it a pre-existing nonconforming structure. It's just a noncompliance structure, which you can't have them remove it. So, that's the issue under, under, so, under 48, Section 7 says, and I have a copy right here if you want to read it.
Yeah, no, I've got-
Yeah, yeah, so I know it gets, but they, they added the additional paragraph in there in, in 2016, or the Act, Chapter 184 of the Acts of 2016, that says, "Anything that's been there for 10 years becomes a pre-existing nonconforming structure, subject to Section 6 and," which is critical, "the local town bylaws." And so, if you go back to Mashpee's town bylaws, it defines pre-existing nonconforming structure as something that is, has to be lawfully in existence, in which does not conform because, uh, it, it, I'm sorry. "A lawfully existing structure that does not conform to the dimensional requirements prescribed by this chapter for the district in which it is located, but which was lawfully in existence at the time the dimensional requirements for which it does not conform became effective." So, now, if you go over to section 17, uh, 174-17, which is the one they're trying to argue for the petition, it says, "Continuous extension alterations, 174-17. Lawfully created structures or uses." So, right off the bat, they already admitted it's not a lawfully created structure, so they wouldn't get the benefits of this paragraph.
Well, then, it, as you know better than I know, it becomes lawful if in fact 48, Section 7 states that it's six years. It becomes then lawful to consider it a pre-existing nonconformity. That's what it's saying. See what I'm saying? If in fact the legislature says, 48, Section 7, says that after six years, it becomes a lawful pre-existing nonconformity, then it is lawful. I mean, that's, I mean, my only problem with this, 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 this argument you're putting forward is, we are of record of a document from our zoning enforcement officer that says, it is his opinion that there are no, that there existed, that there are pre-existing nonconformities, including but not limited to the, the exact issues that you're raising. And so, I don't know how we disagree with our zoning enforcement officer at this moment.
I got you covered. I got this, I got the statute right here. We can read it into the record.
I get it.
Okay, but anyways, all right. I think, I, I think I focus on that one. I'll move to my next point. Gonna move this thing along. I know you guys want to be here all night. Okay. One of the, one of the things here that the applicant hasn't told you is, which is critical, this is critical. "In 2021, the applicant voluntarily deeded 2,201 square feet of their non-wetland land to their abutter, receiving 2,201 square feet of wetland in return." I got the deeds, it's in my letter, Exhibit C, reducing their lot area, increasing the nonconformity. So, right off the bat, so this is, this is 2021. We're only in 2024. It's three years ago. So, three years ago, he carved off a chunk of his property, traded, gave it to his neighbor, and in return, his neighbor gave him wetland in, uh, in return. So, he decreased his lot area, he increased his lot coverage, and now he's coming to the board to say that he's a, you know, pre-existing nonconforming structure, and, um-
Do you have that deed there?
Yeah, I do. It's in my section, Section C, right here. A and R plan and the two deeds follow.
All right, why don't you keep going? While you're talking, I'll read.
Okay.
Sorry. Just trying to move it along.
Yep, I got you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I got my, oops. You know what I could do? You don't mind? Can you give me back mine? Because I got my-
Oh, sure.
Yes, Mary.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, it's the same thing. Fine. Thank you.
And I cited the case law. So, reducing their lot area, increasing their nonconformity. This Act disqualifies the applicant from benefiting from a written finding under Mass. General Law, 48, Section 6, in the town of Mashpee, Zoning Bylaw, 174-17. As stated in, in Planning Board of Norval versus Serena, S.E.R.E.N.A., 406 Mass. 1, 1,008, 1990 case, a landlord will not be permitted to create dimensional nonconformity if he could have used his adjoining land to avoid or diminish the nonconformity. So, we, we have a person here, um, who sold off a piece of his property to his neighbor, decreased the size of his lot, which was already, you know, according to them, was pre-existing nonconforming, made it more nonconforming. Now, they're coming to the board to say they want a finding under, uh, 174, Section 17. So, and so this, and then there's another case, Carbina versus Board Appeals at Truro, 73 Mass. Appellate Court, 266, 2008 case, emphasized that lots may not be reconfigured to obtain grandfather nonconforming exemptions. And now, the other thing is, in Mashpee's zoning bylaw, under section-
How are you certain, Mr. Haney, that this 2,201 square feet, our wetlands are upland?
Because the applicant for 80 Punkhorn Point came to you guys a couple years ago.
My reason for asking this, if they were both uplands, right, it wouldn't matter.
Well, you can see on the plan, it shows this wetland. You just-
Well, yeah, but, you know, as well as I do, these are Form A plans.
No, no, I understand, but you got a-
It's not a conservation. I, I'm concerned that the 2,201, if it's not, if it's not, I'm giving you uplands, you're giving me back wetlands, that, and if you, if I gave you uplands and you gave me back uplands, your issue's over.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%. That's why if you look at the plan, it shows the A and R plan.
I don't, I just-
The piece they have is right here, and you can see the lines. It shows it's inside the, it's-
I get it. It's just awful hard to see that. And, and my, my point is, is 2,201 was deeded out, and 2,201 was deeded back.
So, 2,201 of upland was deeded to the neighbor, and in return, the up, the neighbor deeded him 2,201 of wetland. So, which decreased the nonconform-
My only concern is, is your opinion, upland/wetland. It's not-
Well, I, I have the plans. I mean, you can see from-
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying there, but if you look at the A and R plan-
If it were upland/wetland, there wouldn't be an issue.
I, I agree with you 100%. I wouldn't make this argument if that was the case. But if you can see from that plan, if you look at the piece that's on their plan here that shows the wetland, you can clearly see which one's wetland, which one's not, because the piece he deeded was way over here, and the piece he got was way right here, and the wetland line is right here at the flood plain.
Understood.
So, it's all-
I didn't want to interrupt you. I apologize.
So, I mean, there's no question on that one, uh, because we also have, if you remember, 80 Punkhorn Point came to you guys, for a finding at the time, and it was like about two years ago, and it showed the wetland, wetland lines on that plan there, too, which, you know, so it did show it on there, 80 Punkhorn Point. So, I don't think there's, anyways, um, okay. So, back to my thing. So, um, section 174, sec-, uh, uh, this is zoning, zoning. 174, Section 9, says, "No building shall be erected or used, and no land shall be used or divided unless it is in conformity with the regulation of this chapter." So, when they took the lot, and that's always the downside, when you do an A and R plan, you gotta be very careful, because you could create a lot of problems. You could create an infectious lot. You could create a lot of problems. And so, in this situation, they took a lot that was one size, deeded a chunk of it to the neighbor, got a piece in return that didn't count towards lot area, and now they're trying to make the argument that it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure. They, they lost the rights to that. You know, this was a recent transit-
You're saying an A and R pla- oh, I see the planning board signatures. I do.
Because, but they, you gotta remember, when you do the A and R, the planning board only looks at, and I think one of the planning board members is right here, the planning board only looks at adequacy of access. They don't look at zoning, and they put a endorsement right on there.
I know, I know.
So, I mean, it's, it's-
I get it. The endorsement, I'm sure is right under it.
Yeah, so it says it right there.
Can't read it, but I'm sure it says it.
All right. So, is it me a little hot in here?
Say again?
I says, "Is it me or is it a little hot in here?"
It's because you're going and moving.
I know. I'm getting excited here coming over here.
I don't want you to slow down, actually.
All right, I'm getting excited here. All right, I know, I know. I gotta speed this up. All right. Okay.
I want to give you adequate time to hear. Satisfied, but not too much time, because we need to move the question.
I know, I know. I got you. Okay. So, one of the issues that we have with the house is, they, they make this whole argument that somehow the front of the house is a pre-existing nonconformity. But so, but if you look at the house, and I, I put a picture of it in, if you look at the, I think in the, um, Chris Crane put in his application, you'll see the pictures. So, under, under Mashpee zoning, under the zoning article, 31, uh, Note 19, it excludes overhangs and decks from the encroachment into the lot cover, to the front yard setback. So, we have a situation here, where you have a deck that's overhanging, two feet inside the, um, the front yard setback, and, sorry, the overhang's in, in, going in two feet, and then we have a deck that's going in two feet. That's allowed under zoning. So, the house is not a pre-existing nonconforming structure.
Yeah, but if you're, but if you're saying that, then, so, strike the fact that it's, it, it, he's arguing that under 48, Section 7, because it existed for six years, it's a pre-existing nonconformity. If that statement is correct, then, let's, let's put that argument away. We don't need to rely on 48, Section 7, because it's not, it's not a nonconformity. It's a conformity.
It, currently, right now, it's conforming, but they can't enclose the front porch. That's the problem. Because, and I'll read it here. So, if you have it under, under Footnote 19 of the zoning bylaw, under, uh, section, uh, was it, uh, 174-30? Let me just come in, a little bit mixed up here. So, it says, "These setback requirements," this is for the front yard setback, "These setback requirements shall not apply to the following building projections, provided they do not exceed the sizes specified as measured from the foundation line along a line perpendicular to the nearest property line." It says, "House overhang projected no more than two feet, and open decks or platforms used for egress and projecting no more than four feet." And now, I'm gonna show you a shocker here. You know, they talk about how the engineer certified this. Well, I have the, the ASBIL plan for this house, when they built it. When they, when they did the ASBIL, it's in my, it's in my, it's in the exhibit there in the packet.
I see the ASBIL.
Yep. So, if you look at the ASBIL, it goes 42 feet to the foundation line. 42 feet to the foundation line. So, when they did this ASBIL, they represented to the town of Mashpee Building Department that it is in compliance, it is in compliance with zoning. Now, same engineering firm, it says Cape and Isle Engineering, now they're saying, "Hey, you know what? It's actually not in compliance." And now, we're, oh, by the way, we're a pre-existing nonconforming structure. So, but if you-
But, but look where the arrow goes to very closely at that.
I, I agree with you 100%. I'm gonna get to that in a minute.
It doesn't go to the closest point to the street.
But it's, if you look at the defi-
Lot line.
But you look at the definition, it goes, "Foundation line." That little bump out there is the porch.
Okay.
So, you're seeing the porch.
Looks to heck, be heck of a, longer than two feet.
I, well, it's, it's, the porch is four feet, but you gotta remember, it's only encroaching two feet into the setback. That's why they got the 38. So, they're taking the position, and I also consulted with the assessor, who confirmed, based on the assessor records, who after you build a house, the assessor comes out there, there's no basement there. It's just a, it's just a footing for a porch, and I have the photographs of it, too, from their filing, showing that the porch is open, because you can't have a basement there with an open porch above you, because all the water would be going into your, your basement. So, you know, if you look at the picture here, you can see it. The house, and we're talking about this little overhang right here. As you can see right here, the overhang right here. See, they, they purposely designed this house to comply with the zoning when they built it, to get the sign off. So, you got the two-foot encroachment into the 40 feet, which is allowed under the zoning bylaw, and then you got the open porch below it. I mean, you can see the house right here. See, there's the overhang. Open porch on the first floor. Open, open porch on the first floor. It's right here. So, I mean, the house is in compliance with the front yard setback. I mean, they represented it when they built the house, it was in compliance. The zoning hasn't changed for the definitions, Footnote 19, because they got the two-foot overhang going into the 40-foot setback. They got the open porch below it, but they can't enclose the open porch without a variance.
What other points do you have?
I'm wrapping it up. Almost done.
We got a lot, a lot happening.
I know, I know. I know, I know. Sorry. All right. So, um, recently, I, I raised the issue that, uh, I guess the engineer didn't pick up. When they originally proposed this plan, this is the revised plan, they put the reserve area, um, I'm sorry, the cabana was going right on top of the reserve area for the septic system, and I said, "Hey, you gotta move that. It doesn't comply with the-"
We, we have a letter from the Board of Health, so I'm, that we're not the Board of Health. I'm not concerned about that.
I want to point out just one thing in the record. So- There's the new reserve area. There's a little problem here. There's a well here, a well here, a well here, and a well here.
But the Board of Health has accepted that reserve area. We have it in a letter. I'm not going down that route.
I don't, I don't think they actually accepted. I think they said they moved it. They haven't, I didn't, I asked for an applicant-
My point is this, the Board of Health has recognized that they moved it to a new location. I presumably have to sit there and say that must have, must have shown where that new location was. The Board of Health didn't say no to it. This board has no authority in, when it comes to Board of Health issues.
All right. I just wanted to point that out on the record. Um, let me just make sure I hit my points here, and I'll quiet down. All right. So, back to the cabana. So, if you, if you look at the zoning bylaw, hypothetically, if this thing was a pre-existing nonconforming structure, if you looked at section 17 there, which you gotta have for the findings, and I, I brought along the, uh, pretty much the case that goes on there. This is the George Magidolis plaintiff versus, this is the town of Mashpee, 2005 case. I think it was none of you guys were on the board then, but anyways. But this case law, uh, interprets that section and the certain findings that the, that the, the zoning board have to make. And one of the requirements is, that's being overlooked is, under the 117, um, 17- Oh, here it is. Here it is. Got it right here.
You gotta wrap this-
I know, I know, I know. I know. All right, I know. Sorry. Good thing I don't come all the time to these guys. All right.
Why, why don't we agree to the following? It is five minutes of seven. We have till seven.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap it up. Yeah, I got it.
Time's out at seven.
Yeah, I got you. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to see it before then, but seven o'clock, I'm drawing a hard line.
Okay. So, 174-17, it says, talks about the findings, uh, it's got an extension, or, now, this is critical. It says, "Board knows that such change, extension, or alteration shall be substantially more detrimental than existing nonconforming structures or uses to the neighborhood, and that there is adequate land area to provide significant parking and setbacks as may be required." So, one of the requirements is, this board has to make a finding for the setbacks, too. And now, we have a case from Land Court that interprets that, um, section, that for the new structure, it's gotta meet the setbacks that the zoning board have, and the setbacks is 40 feet. So-
As long as there's no pre-existing nonconformity.
Well, but based on this case, they're talking about, you gotta make the finding. If you're increasing it, you're not meeting the setbacks. So, it's, I got the case you can read it to. I'll leave with you. All right, just to wrap this thing up here. I'll get out of here a little early.
That'd be great.
Should be thankful I don't come to these hearings all the time.
And I, and I do want to give you enough time to-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I just want to control it also.
All right. Oops, got my papers all mixed up here. Oh, so, also, the cabana is not an alteration. So, Mashpee zoning bylaw doesn't define alteration, but in the zoning bylaw, under the definitions, Part B, if you look at it, it says, "Any definition that's not in the zoning bylaw, you gotta look to the-" definition that's not in the zoning bylaw, you've got to look to the, the state building code." Says right there, I mean, if you guys know that, I could, I got it right here if you want to see it. So, if you look at the definitions, alteration, this is the International Building Code, this is the one that Mash, Massachusetts uses. Alteration says, "Any construction or renovation to an existing structure other than a repair or an addition." I mean, I, I find it very hard to say a cabana is an extension of a pool. They're not attached, two separate things. And that's, I think it's very clear, there was actually a case on this, the client case there in Wellesley. You know, they did this, tried to do the same thing, and the court rejected the argument. They said, you know, a new, totally new structure is not an alteration of an existing structure.
I understood.
So, that rests my case.
Thank you very much for your input. Just trying to manage this. I know there may be other questions in the audience. Why don't I continue with the audience and then Counselor, if you want to have a discussion. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in reference to this application? Okay, Counselor, would you like to have a, first of all, would the board like to say anything about that? Would you rather hear from Counsel in reference to his defense?
Rather hear from Counsel.
Okay. Counselor, please.
Thank you. I'm going to make a lot of what he says moot. My client is willing to remove the cabana from the application. So, all he'll be seeking from this board are the two additions, and we'll figure it out from there. I, again, I wholeheartedly disagree with Mr. Haney regarding the existing non-conformity.
The line, the line is to here. That's more than four feet, that's more than two feet, that's the edge of the deck.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a, it's an existing non-conformity. It's not an overhang or anything of the like.
So, Ron, what's your feeling on enclosing that porch?
I don't have a problem with anything else in this application but the cabana. I think the cabana should be removed. At that point in time, I think historically this board has been very receptive, I'll say, in reference to lot coverage issues when it comes to, what percentage were we there under the old process?
It was seven percent under the old process.
I'm okay with the rest of the application, as long as that cabana is removed.
Well, we are-
And I'm not saying, come back, maybe, I don't know.
No, I know. For tonight's purposes, to put this before the board-
And, and I might say no when you come back, but I can tell you, I'm saying no tonight in reference to the cabana.
Absolutely. So, my, my ask from this board is to withdraw the application as it pertains to the cabana, and put simply before this board the two additions to the single-family residence.
So you asked a question, Jonathan?
So we need a, eventually, before you sign it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
We'd need a new plan.
I mean, I think Mr. Haney raises some points, but we have a zoning enforcement officer that's given us in writing his opinion.
Yep.
I'm going to rely on his opinion. I'm not, I'm not an attorney. He's not here tonight.
Right.
And, and I'm willing to move forward under the basis of that letter given to us by our zoning enforcement officer.
And I would, you know, you can certainly condition tonight's approval on a revised plan removing the cabana.
Totally understand.
As I know.
So, having said that, alright, so, there's no one else in the audience?
Nope.
Okay.
Close the discussion.
Alright, I'd like to have a motion to disclose, to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, any other further discussion by this board?
No.
Alright, so I'd like to have a motion in reference to the actual application.
I got a couple of questions.
Sue.
Okay, so I'm going to condition it that the cabana is removed-
And then we need a plan to pick in that, prior to a building permit application. It needs to be submitted to the board, and-
Signed by you.
Signed by me would be fine. It's pretty easy to remove it, but that's fine. Doesn't have to come back.
Okay.
And just make sure that, I think you want to also make sure that comments read in the record, including my, I'll leave it to Mr. Haney's document. I think it's important that-
That's all in the record.
Yeah, it is. I just, just want to make sure that it's part of the record. If you want to start it, we can amend as appropriate. If that's okay with you, Sharon?
Okay.
So why don't we do this? So Sharon, would you like to make a motion in reference to this application, please?
Yes, I would like to make a motion in regards to eighty-four Pump Corn Road. Owners Robert Allen Volpe and Michelle A. Volpe request a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of two additions on the property located in an R three zoning district, map one hundred, parcel five, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Law forty-eight, section six. Two, site plans prepared for Robert Allen and Michelle Volpe, eighty-four Pump Corn Road, Mashpee, Mass., sheet one of one, dated March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Revised, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Revised mitigation calculations and proposed mitigation, remove proposed putting green, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Added dimensions from existing deck to street, July second, two thousand twenty-four. Added septic reserve area to plans stamped and signed by Raoul Lazardi Rivera and Matthew C. Costas, Cape and Island Engineering. Three, floor plans and elevation plans prepared for Volpe residents, eighty-four Pump Corn Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by K. Marshall Works Design. A one, first floor plan right and rear elevations partial. A two footprint diagram, front, rear, right and left elevations dated March twenty-four, I mean, March two thousand twenty-four. Condition, on all department comments read into the record, including but not limited to Water Health, Conservation Department, Building Commissioners, as well as comments of Matthew Haney. Any changes to the plans will require an application to return to the board. The board finds and determines, of six, the board finds and determines under one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking and there is, are no new non-conforming is being created. Seven, condition that the cabana is removed and a revised plan be submitted to the Building Department before any building permit is issued and will be signed by the Chairman of the ZBA.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Here you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Did you bring a book?
Not at all. Read the whole town annual report.
You're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, there's gonna be questions later in the annual report.
Questions, yes.
I hope you got it right.
Yes.
Yeah?
Ryan, you can say, no plans, oh, when this come down.
Okay, here we go.
You got it.
No plans.
Say again?
No plans.
What do you mean, no plans?
Of course I have it.
You got to bring new ones and sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right out of that one.
Alright.
You ready?
So sitting on this will be our five regular members. So would someone like to read, George, I guess, read seventy-seven Echo Road into the, um, record, please?
What? Excuse me?
Seventy-seven Echo.
Seventy-seven Echo.
What are you looking at?
What are you looking at?
Is that the agenda?
Ninety-three?
No, seventy-seven Echo.
We got to do seventy-seven Echo first.
The third one down.
I see the applicant's attorney sitting in front of us.
Wrong papers, then.
We don't want, we don't want to negate him. I mean, it's-
Seventy-seven Echo Road, petitioner-
Those have the wrong papers.
It does, yes, it says-
Wow. Well, you need one like this, Jonathan.
Pull it out of the book.
Well, George, if you could read it, please. Jonathan will catch up in a minute.
You have another agenda?
Seventy-seven Echo Road, petitioner White Oak Holdings LLC requests a special permit under section one seventy-four dash twenty-four C two and one seventy-four twenty-five G thirteen of the zoning bylaws to allow for a contractor yard on property located in the I one, I dash one and light industrial overlay districts, map nineteen, parcel three, extension four, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Pamela M.-
Kenjami.
Kenjami, trustee, thank you, of the eighty-one Echo Trust Reality, Realty Trust, continued from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four hearings.
Counselor.
Good evening, David Lawler, and you folks know a little bit of it, except maybe for Chris Corain. Hey, I thank you again for the expediency that this board has worked with, and in particular, Pesci Engineering as well. I'm not going to get into too many facts. I know it's going to be a late night for you. We're here on a continuance. I don't want to be too presumptuous, but my understanding was that the really only outstanding issue was going to be the review by the peer review engineer, Pesci Engineering and Associates, and that has taken place. My understanding is that all of the recommendations that have been made have been adopted by, by Coastal, and have been submitted to you on the new plan. And that being said, I'm just going to field questions. I don't think, again-
So why don't we just go, any letters that need to be read in the record? Ladies and gentlemen, I'll give you an update in a minute. I think the applicant's done a great job. So, but why don't we look at any letters that need to be read?
Did I read something this afternoon that came in that-
Yeah, Pesci's.
A list of equipment that was going to be part-
Yeah.
On this, and-
Yeah, I can give you an update in a minute.
Does that look good?
Yes. I think the applicant's done a great job, but I think if, if there's any new letters, why don't we go that route first? And then, what will, any letters, any, from anyone? I know we've already read most of them into the record at the last hearing.
I think they all were read into the-
Okay. Nothing new, other than Mr. Pesci's letter, which we can read.
Board of Health, no comment, sorry. Board of Health, no comment. Conservation, maybe.
Because they already did last time.
Yes, Building Commissioner, Mrs. Eddie Pump Corn, Mrs. Eddie Pump Corn, nope.
Alright, so I guess I will present to the board what's taken place. Mr. Pesci has interacted with Raoul back and forth. If you see on this plan, the site plan, the top right-hand corner, that grayed out area, substantial changes made up there, approved by Mr. Pesci along with Raoul. A lot of effort put into by both team members, well, our team and Raoul. And I think at this point in time, we do have a document from Mr. Pesci stating, it's in the packet, that he is all set. There was a discrepancy in reference to the, what was it?
The kit.
The kit, exactly.
That was in the first letter.
And, and you straightened that out by saying, it's already included, it's in the letter, so we understand that now. Mr. Pesci said that's correct. So at this point in time, we have peer review saying thumbs up, all set, a hundred percent. I've looked at this myself, I've interacted with Mr. Pesci, great job. I think we've done what we're supposed to do as a board, and that is to protect zone two and our groundwater discharge area. We've hired outside consultant firm, they've stamped this plan, they've taken it around the block several times. The applicant has met all the, all the concerns of that peer review engineering firm. And at this point in time, I would recommend an approval subject to the audience input. Anybody have any questions?
I agree.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any input in reference to this application? Okay. So having none, so I've covered this. You have a question, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion in reference to the approval, a motion in reference to the application.
I'll make the motion. Make a motion to approve seventy-seven Echo Road, petitioner White- White Oak Holdings LLC requests a special permit under section one seventy-four dash twenty-four, C two and one seventy-four dash twenty-five G thirteen of the zoning bylaws to allow for the contractor yard on a property located in the I one and light industrial overlay district, map nineteen, parcel three, exit-
Exit.
Parcel three.
Extension four, I think.
Extension four. Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Pamela M. Kenjami, trustee of the Echo Road, eighty-one Echo Road Realty Trust, in the following conditions, with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Law forty-eight, section nine. Site plan prepared for Alfari Tree Care Project seventy-seven Echo Road, sheet number one of one, date April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, revision date five twenty-nine twenty-four. Add proposed gate, revise berm, and add detail. Identify additional storage areas, eliminate proposed Conex box units area, extend limit of work, six one twenty-four, revise drain basin, add concrete apron for material storage area, seven two twenty-four, revise paved equipment storage area, add first defense drainage unit, add equipment vehicles. Three, correspondence received from peer review, Pesci Engineering dated July eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Four, condition that the applicant shall issue a working capital account to the amount of six thousand dollars. The check will, the check shall be issued to the town of Mashpee to utilize to pay for the initial peer review and for the future peer review of inspections and sign-offs.
If I can interject, that's been done. Sorry.
Five, conditioned on all peer review recommendations submitted by Pesci Engineering. Six, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and the Board of Health. Seven, conditioned on recommendations submitted by the Planning Review Committee, conditioned that there is no storage containers, pods, or alike on site. Conditioned at thirty by thirty-five foot track pad, the access point to the site, and will be adequately maintained in perpetuity. Conditioned that the applicant considers road and control around the perimeter of the property to protect the abutting property owners. Conditioned that the locking, locked gate be installed with a Knox box for fire department access. Eight, any additional changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to the board. Page two. Number nine, the board finds the proposed contractor yard is consistent with the applicant's state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, and plans, including but not limited to section one seventy-four dash twenty-four, C two, and one seventy-four dash twenty-five, G thirteen. Number ten, stormwater O N M plan manual shall be recorded concurrently with a special permit recording. Number eleven, Ed Pesci Engineering shall sign off on the as-built depicted that the fact that all the work is in compliance with the approved plans, said sign-off shall be completed prior to the storage of any materials and onsite equipment.
Do you have any issues with those comments, please?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Well done, by the way. I think the process worked well. I think the town was protected, and I think the applicant did a great job.
And again, for the record, I really appreciate how you folks moved the peer review process ahead of time. I think that's a great thing to do, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saved my client a lot. Thank you.
Enjoy the day.
Yep. Have a good rest of the summer.
Tell your client to make a lot of money.
They will. I hope so. I've got some babies to support.
Okay.
Uh, that was my agenda.
Good choice.
Get the right lines.
Okay. Do I, any of this have to, oh, another one here?
Check the box.
I don't know. I don't think there's a stamp in any of this. Okay. So ninety-three bluff will be our five regular members. And at this point, George, would you like to read ninety-three bluff into the record, please?
Ninety-three Bluff Avenue. Owner, Mary Jane Colton, trustee of the ninety-three Bluff Avenue Reality Trust, requests a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash seventy-three of the zoning bylaws to allow-
Thirty-three.
One seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to-
Ed Pesci Engineering shall sign off on the as-built depicted that the fact that all the work is in compliance with the approved plans, said sign-off shall be completed prior to the storage of any materials and onsite equipment.
Do you have any issues with those comments, please?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Well done, by the way. I think the process worked well. I think the town was protected, and I think the applicant did a great job.
And again, for the record, I really appreciate how you folks moved the peer review process ahead of time. I think that's a great thing to do, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saved my client a lot. Thank you.
Enjoy the day.
Yep. Have a good rest of the summer.
Tell your client to make a lot of money.
They will. I hope so. I've got some babies to support.
Okay.
Uh, that was my agenda. Get the right line.
Okay. Do I, any of this have, oh, another one here? I don't know. I don't think there's a stamp in any of this. Okay. So Ninety-three Bluff will be our five regular members, and at this point, George, would you like to read Ninety-three Bluff into the record, please?
Ninety-three Bluff Avenue. Owner, Mary Jane Colton, trustee of the Ninety-three Bluff Avenue Reality Trust, requests a written finding under Section 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws allow.
Yeah, you said seventy-three, I think.
One seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a roof over an existing deck, reconfigure the access stairs to deck, and add a new front entryway to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district and the Pompanset Overlay District, map one eighteen, parcel fifty-seven, Mashpee-Mass.
Counselor.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain, representing the Ninety-three Bluff Avenue Trust. As the public hearing notice stated, we are here for a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen and one seventy-four thirty-three for three, three alterations to the existing structure. So they are highlighted on the Cape and Islands Plan in the dark, kind of the dark brown. We are putting an overhang over an existing deck. We are reconfiguring the stairs to make them smaller to the access to deck, and we are adding this front entryway here. So this lot is in the Pompanset Overlay District. It is completely in the flood zone, so we have the non-conformity as to lock coverage at a hundred percent. We have the non-conformity of the setback to wetlands at zero. Otherwise, we do not have any other non-conformities. We are not increasing any coverage. The actual structure coverage is going down by a few feet, so the lock coverage under the old way is, I think, nineteen point six, and it's staying at nineteen point six. So it's not, there's no change in the lock coverage or the structure coverage. It's actually going down by a few feet. We're not increasing any existing non-conformities. We're not creating any new non-conformities. The, again, the roof over the deck is going over the deck, so it's in already disturbed areas, and the entryway is still over, I don't even think it counts towards the setback, but, you know, would meet the twenty-five feet. So I think it's excluded under the bylaw anyways. So, and again, the stairs that are being reconfigured are getting smaller. They're not encroaching on any of the existing setbacks to either the rear or the front. So, pretty straightforward project.
Is that it?
That is it.
George, could you read any letters into the record, whether it be from agencies and/or butters, please?
Okay, Conservation Comments. Conservation, Ninety-three Bluff Ave., resource areas land subject to coastal storm floage, LSCSF, buffer zone to coastal dune, and buffer zone to coastal beach. Board of Health comments.
Yeah, could I, so Conservation just said that the resource areas, but it didn't say whether they approved it or didn't?
I think there was an administrative approval.
Oh, okay. I was just hearing the zones that we're dealing with. Okay, I'm sorry.
My bad, my bad. Administrative approval was issued due to construction of a roof over existing deck will require no new footings, replacement of existing deck on existing footings with no expansion relocation of front door, and reduction in width of side deck access steps.
Right. I'm sorry, did it say that they're putting in new footings, or they're using existing footings?
Using existing footings, what I've seen.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Board of Health comments. Ninety-three Bluff Ave., Board of Health. House is in Zone Two. The floor plan shows three bedrooms. If they are removing a bedroom from four to three, the fourth bedroom cannot be put back in the future because it is in a Zone Two and only ten thousand square feet of property. Otherwise, no comment.
Is that it, George?
Well, I'm seeing.
I think so.
Any butters, anything? Okay.
No.
All right. Board questions?
None.
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
Audience?
Audience, yeah, no question. Mr. Morrison, so anyone in the audience have any input, questions, issues in reference to this application? Okay. Back to the board, no board questions.
No.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion reference to the application. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to make the motion for the.
Go ahead. Be my guest, young man.
I just wanted to just clarify.
Yeah.
Can you, can I ask that Board of Health comment about the bedrooms?
So Board of Health, Ninety-three Bluff Ave., Board of Health. Houses in Zone Two. The floor plan shows three bedrooms. If they are removing a bedroom from four to three, the fourth bedroom cannot be put back in the future because it is in a Zone Two.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I am too. I don't want to be, can you read the first sentence, please?
House is in a Zone Two. The floor plan shows three bedrooms.
And then it goes on to say, but if there's four, it shows four, and if he goes back to three, he can, can't go back to four.
Here's my confusion. I'm looking at a floor plan that shows the first floor with three bedrooms. This is bedroom two, bedroom three, bedroom four. Doesn't show a primary bedroom. Looking at the elevations, I'm looking at a two-story structure. So I'm not assuming. I'm just don't know if there's a bedroom on the upper level. Maybe Raul can answer that? I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, as I say, there's nothing, there's nothing intended for the interior house as part of this project. I mean.
I know. So it's just a Board of Health comment. I don't know how we.
It's weird.
Well, we could condition it on dealing with, make sure that the Board of Health has straightened out, because there seems to be a possible discrepancy, and the Board of Health is going to have to review it.
There's no second floor plan.
And make sure they sign up. Yeah, I get it.
I don't have a second.
And we're not, and we're not doing anything inside that.
We're not doing anything.
Raul, do you have any input in this?
Yeah, there's no intention of reducing the existing four-bedroom layout to three-bedrooms.
So whatever bedrooms exist today are going to continue to exist. We still, so I see, it sounds like what the Board of Health is saying is, if they go from four to three, then they're staying at three. But if they're at four, we're fine.
That's, is that the way?
That's what it seems.
That's what I'm hearing.
Want me to read it again?
I think that's why, I think that's why Board of Health said that, because it says, is it a four-bedroom septic system?
It's a four-bedroom septic system, so.
Yeah, I think that's a discrepancy. The plan, Board of Health looked at this plan and only saw the first floor, three bedrooms. They didn't see that there's a bedroom on the second floor.
Yeah, yeah.
There's clearly a second floor in the elevations, but for some reason, we don't have the second.
So.
Again, only because there's nothing happening.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue with it, but it just threw me off.
I leave it, I mean, your call.
I, I think what we do is, in the motion, we just say we.
Need clarif, clarity?
I didn't even think you needed.
No, I don't think we do. But it's a Board of Health.
It's a done deal.
Right.
Scott raises, so whatever, whatever Scott wants to do, and the rest of the board wants to do, I'm fine with.
We're staying four.
The house is Zone Two. The floor plan shows three bedrooms. If they are removing a bedroom from four to three, the fourth bedroom cannot be put back.
See, he's not saying the top, yeah.
So I'm good.
All right.
I'm good. It's just the way it was boarded.
They didn't see the second floor plan.
Right. Would you like to read the motions?
I would love to. It's a whole new system with these files. I'm sorry, this is confusing. Going to put these things in slots now. I'm not that organized, Marion. You can't do that to me. All right, I lost my motion. All right, here we go, sorry. To make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ninety-three Bluff Avenue. Owner, Mary Jane Colton, trustee of the Ninety-three Bluff Avenue Realty Trust, request a written finding under Section 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a roof over the existing deck, reconfigure the access stairs to the deck, and add a new front entryway to pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a property located in an R-three zoning district in the Pompanset Overlay District, map one eighteen, parcel fifty-seven, Mashpee-Mass, with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law forty-eight, Section six. Number two, site plan prepared for Mary Jane Colton, trustee, project Ninety-three Bluff Avenue, Mashpee Sheet Number One of One, date October third, two thousand twenty-two, revised four sixteen twenty-four. Note, new deck road, no deck, so say roof, says rude. And access modifications prepared for, by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costa, number five two two eight two. Plans prepared for Colton residence, Ninety-three Bluff Ave., Mash, Mashpee-Mass, dated March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Architect Associates, A-one first floor, and framing plans, A-two elevations, A-three sections and details. S-one structural notes prepared by Transition Engineering, Inc. Conditioned in all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and the Conservation Department. And just as a note, Board of Health is reminding the applicant that if they go from four bedrooms to three bedrooms, the home will stay a three bedroom, cannot go back to four.
I'll second.
I'm not done, sorry.
Hey.
I know your answer.
Pay attention here.
Five.
I was.
Five. The board finds the proposed project under one seventy-four- seventeen and one seventy-four- thirty-three is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use it, or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
I'll second it. All's in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a pregnant pause.
It just threw me for a loop there when I was looking at the floor plan.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
I just wanted to clarify.
I guarantee they didn't show that second floor plan through the Board of Health.
And they didn't see it, so, but now that I know.
I asked the Board of Comments like four times, and you didn't say anything.
What's that?
I said, Board of Comments, and no one said anything. And then you started reading the motion. You said, wait a second.
Well, it confused, I didn't stop the motion. It was, I just went back to the plan.
That's all right.
You know, I've been printing these things for twenty years.
Well, I looked at the floor, I looked at the elevations. I looked at the elevations. It isn't on the floor. There's something wrong. Then I know the house.
It wasn't a bush, is it?
There you go.
Yeah. Save some ink.
It's just the way the board didn't sound like.
Yeah, no, I know.
It made it sound like it's a three-bedroom house.
Understood.
Yeah, they didn't.
I had to hear it four times, made it understand it, but finally got it.
Oh, it's not your fault.
If they had put the second floor plan, it would have been clear. Yeah. Which is surprising, because.
It doesn't seem to me that the Board of Health ever saw the second floor plan, because otherwise they would have.
Well, they're not doing anything inside the house, that's why.
Well, they are, there's some interior walls.
Oh, I didn't even know that.
But it's nothing to do with us, so it wasn't relevant.
All right. Sitting on Thirty-seven Driftwood would be the five regular members.
Yeah, we're not done. You need to get stuff to sign.
All right, I'm going to do that while we're moving forward here. So, George, we'd like to read Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle, and sitting on will be the five regular members.
Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle. Owners, Christopher and Maureen Kilburn, request a written finding under Section 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaw to allow for construction of a three-season porch to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in R-three zoning district in the Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision, map one twenty-five, parcel one ninety-seven, Mashpee-Mass.
If you could give us your connection to the project, your locate and your name.
Sure.
Please.
Excuse me. Good evening. So we are Maureen and Chris Kilburn, owners of Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle. We are looking to enclose the deck on the, on the back of our, at the back of our home. And as part of that, we are not going to expand the existing footprint, just take the existing deck as it is and enclose it, and make it a three-season room. We're building it over the pre-existing elevated structure. It won't be visible from the road, and obviously, as a result, it won't be any closer to the lot lines than it is today.
Okay.
So it's pre-existing? Pre-existing deck. All you're doing is enclosing it? Correct. And it's on pilings? It is, yes.
Okay. Do we have any letters to be read into the record, whether it be town and/or butters?
All right, Board of Health. Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle. Board of Health, porch is a second means of an egress to house, cannot be used as a sleeping room. House remains a four-bedroom. Conservation Comments. Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle. Resource areas LSCSF.
Land subject to coastal storm. Do you see anything from the butters?
Any letters from anyone else?
No, there's no.
I don't think so.
Nothing? Is that it?
That's it.
So Board of Health, they consider this, who's in a.
Yeah, I'm bad.
They don't care if they got.
Thank you, George. Board questions?
I'd shake one.
Yeah. Any issues here?
Yeah, I've got no issues.
There's no variance, just a written finding, so.
Yep. I have no issues here.
Zero.
Okay, audience, anyone in the audience like to give input in reference to this application, please? Okay, seeing none. Again, I'll go back to the board. Anybody in the board have any input?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion in reference to the application, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle. Owners, Christopher and Maureen Kilburn, request a written finding under Section 174-17 and Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a three-season porch to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a property located in R-three zoning district in Little Neck Bay Cluster Subdivision, map one twenty-five, parcel one ninety-seven, Mashpee-Mass, with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Law forty-eight, Section six. Two, plot plan Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle, Mashpee-Mass, date April first, two thousand twenty-four, prepared for Christopher and Maureen Kilburn, prepared by Northeast Geospatial Consultants, space scale one inch equals ten feet, stamped and signed by Shane R. Bonin, number five seven four nine five, professional land surveyor. Plans prepared for Kelborn residents, prepared for cutting-edge custom builders, Thirty-seven Driftwood Circle, Mashpee-Mass, project G-two-three-one-oh-two, sheet one of two, sheet A-one elevation and sections, A-two floor plan and framing, date January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Gray Wing Design. Conditioned in all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. The board finds the proposed project under Section 174-17 and Section 174-33 is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the, or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Coming back. Build a tree. we'd like to read one Niobe Road.
Nish, Nahoyden.
Nahoyden Road.
Nahoyden Road.
Nahoyden Road. Into the record, please.
One Nahoyden Road. Owners, Gerald C. and Linda V. Seymour, request a written finding under Sections 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for alteration and extension to a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage on property located in R-three zoning district, map one twenty-five, parcel one oh eight, Mashpee-Mass.
Yes. So if you could give us your names and your involvement in the project, it'd be greatly appreciated, sir, sirs.
He's the contractor. I'm Gerald Seymour, and my wife Linda Seymour back there. We own, we've been here for forty-three years. We have the garage, and we want to take the roof off and put an apartment upstairs.
Okay.
That we'd like to do.
Do you have anything else to say, or, and that's fine. I'm fine with it. We're used to people, people being more long-winded, sir.
Well, I've been here forty-three years, a bit of this.
I get it, I get it. And I'm totally fine with your submission. Totally fine with it.
He's the contractor, so.
Right to the point.
This is all new to me, so.
All right. So any letters from any agencies? And thank you for your input, sir. Any letters from agencies?
Yep.
Okay.
So basically, you're putting in an apartment upstairs?
A single-bedroom apartment upstairs over the garage. I have a twenty-six twenty-six garage, and we want.
Let's, if we just.
Board of Health comments. One Nahoyden Road.
Yes.
Board of Health. Septic design and install to comply with five-bedroom garage.
We just had the new septic system put in. That was approved for this.
One Nahoyden, Conservation Comments. One Nahoyden Road, resource area LSCSF. Property was issued letter of map amendment, L O M A and F E M A, bringing the lot out of LSCSF.
Lucky man.
So we didn't interpret all that, too?
Yeah, so he's no longer in the flood plain.
And subject to.
He's a lucky man. He's no longer in the flood plain. That's what it says.
Oh, that's what, I'm not in the flood.
You're a lucky guy.
That's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, they came down and did the per.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else? I didn't see any letters?
No.
Building didn't have any comments?
Board of Health?
He read them. He already read. He already read them.
He read Board of Health.
Read Board and read Conservation.
Any neighbor letters?
Didn't see any.
Nothing.
We sent all the letters out, yeah.
All right, so board questions?
I don't have anything.
No, just. We didn't get anything from.
That's what I was just wondering, just, I mean, it's two means of egress, so that's what I was looking.
Well, I mean, you're certainly gonna have to satisfy Building when you go apply for a building, but you understand that, right? We're not, we're not.
No, no, the building committee.
Yeah, but we see your plans here, we're not approving specifically the framing, the, you know, that something you have to satisfy the building inspector with. He's not here tonight for his input, so we're just telling you that you need to satisfy whatever concerns he has when you go to him. This board is only looking at zoning issues, et cetera.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I showed him all the plans.
Are you here because the building, the building commissioner requested you to come, is that why you came?
Well, yeah, they told us we had to come to this.
Then Dave's looked at it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have just one question.
Also the stairway on the side.
It was the stairway on the side was the issue with the.
So that's, yeah, I actually.
I have the two.
So that's the actual.
Coming forward, so.
So the total height is twenty-four point six?
How did it go?
The structure?
The structure would be.
What it says. How did the structure?
Well, when we built the garage way, way back, I've been here forty-three years, it was, it was supposed to be dormit, and I didn't dormit it, so now we.
There's no way this is.
We wanted dormit.
No, no.
So all you're doing is putting dormits on it?
Basically, yes.
Wow.
And a stairway and doing the inside?
No. Right, do the inside. It's storage all upstairs now.
So just for clarity, why is this applicant specifically in front of us?
I have no idea.
Well, I'm just asking Marianne, because he, she, she sits right next to the zoning enforcement officer.
Dave had a request.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions?
I don't think Dave has any issues, if he didn't, if he's seen this and hasn't any comments.
Any other questions of the board?
And he didn't send.
Audience, anyone in the audience having input, issues or questions with this application? I'm gonna go back to the board again, anyone else?
No.
All right, motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion.
Five seconds.
Second.
All's in favor.
All right.
Motion in reference to the application, Scott, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve one Nahoyden Road, owners Gerald C. and Linda V. Seymour, request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen and section one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for the alteration and extension of a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage on property located in R-three zoning district, map one twenty-five, parcel one oh-eight, Mashpee Mass, with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under section, under Mash General Law forty-eight, section six. Number two, site plan prepared for Gerald Seymour, one Nahoyden Road, Mashpee Mass, date five twenty-two, twenty-four, scale one inch equals forty feet, stamped and signed by Dave Sanicki. Nope, by the way, I haven't seen that name in a while.
Oh, yeah.
And twenty-eight oh eight five, professional land surveyor, Palma Mass. Number three, building plans prepared for Seymour residents, one Nahoyden Road, Mashpee Mass, design, add new living space above existing garage, prepared by J.B. Design, date seven fifteen twenty-three. Page one, proposed left, front, right, and rear elevation. Page two, proposed second-floor plan. Page three, share wall elevations. Page four, studs and headers. Floor condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, the board finds the proposed project under section, under section one seventy-four dash seventeen and one seventy-four dash thirty-three is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood.
One second.
Second.
One second, I just wanna make sure, and I'm gonna ask you a question, you may not have any answer. Are you creating any new non-conformity? You're staying within the footprint, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I have a second, all's in favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Just wanna make sure. All right.
Moving right along.
Yes. Really? Oh, good.
Well, that was gonna be a real point, took forty-five minutes. Anyway.
At least.
So it would be like seven fifteen.
What a way to look at it.
Seven o'clock.
What a way to look at it, you out of there.
I didn't leave any lights on for Charlie, he's gonna be upset.
No TV on?
The radio, so I'm sure Derry left the music on for him, because she went to work.
Two? Must be more than that. What's going on?
Oh, boy.
All right, George, would you, would you read the next application to the record, please?
I was just worried. Four Wilsons Grove, owner Bradford L. Crosby Trust and the Bradford L. Crosby Family Trust, request a written finding under sections one seventy-four dash seventeen and sections one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck, extension and alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in R-three zoning district in the Pompanesas Overlay District, map one eighteen, parcel sixty-six, Mashpee, Mashpee Mass.
Sitting on this will be our five regular board members. There you go. So if you could give us your name and your involvement in the project, please.
Sure, my name's Brad Crosby, I'm the owner, full-time resident, Four Wilsons Grove, this is my son, Jake. So we're asking to build a deck on a non-conforming lot on a, non-conforming street, I guess, Wilsons Grove. I wanted to point out that the average of the coverage on that street is, is right around thirty, thirty-three point six, I think, and even though mine's at twenty-six five now, I'm proposing that it go up to about thirty-one percent. It's in a, it's in the flood zone. I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is the, the stairs are starting, cement stairs are starting to rot, and I wanna replace that. We have a picnic table on the side with, so this would make it a little more even, safer to walk around. And I think what I'm proposing would make the property more appealing, make it look more Cape-like. I don't know if you can see by the, the plans, little, little plain cottage that was, you know, year-round house, but was built in the fifties, so. Where I'm building is in the, the L shape of the house, so I'm not going any further over to my neighbor, who's here, or, or to the front, who is another neighbor back there, so no one has had any objections, so I guess that's my case.
Okay, thank you very much. So George, any comments, documents, letters?
Yep, Board of Health.
Read the record, please.
Four Wilsons Grove, deck is over septic tank, do not put footings on tank or piping. Stairs are at the corner of the leaching field, no footing can be placed inside the stone of the leaching field. Conservation comments, Four Wilsons Grove, resource areas LSCSF. Request for determination of applicab- applicability RDA permit applied with commission, approved unanimously due to the reduction in hardscape, reduction in lawn, and removal of portion of retaining wall.
Is there any other letters, George, whether it be Butters or anyone?
I haven't seen any.
Okay, so, board questions, please?
Please do.
Yes.
I'm a little confused on the plan, and maybe it's a flood zone, it says, on the bottom-left corner, it says lock coverage existing fifty-five point four percent, proposed sixty, I think it's a sixty-six point six.
Right, that's, that's due to the, to the floodplain?
Yeah, there you go, that's what I thought.
And the existing structure is twenty-six point five, going new, going to thirty-one point six.
Is that if you take out land subject to coastal storm flood? Is that where you're getting the difference in the numbers?
Right.
Yes.
He tried to list them both.
What is?
Conservation, when he asked for that.
Twenty percent.
Should say on there.
Building height.
Should say required, it's probably twenty, because it's not Pompanesas.
Twenty, film three.
Pompanesas is twenty-five, so.
I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, that's correct, it is twenty-five.
I'm not seeing the chart where it's.
Twenty-five.
Because it's Pompanesas.
Correct.
Oh, here, lock coverage twenty-five percent max.
And what are they going from and to?
Twenty-six point five to thirty-one point eight.
Historically, just to tell you what we're discussing right now, historically, this board has been very careful in improving an increase in lock coverage, specifically when you're at twenty-five, you were pre-existing non-conforming at what, twenty-six, did you say?
Yep.
Yeah.
So you're going from twenty-six to thirty-something percent?
Thirty-one.
The board has been very concerned about that, and has historically turned down a lot of applicants. And we certainly don't wanna send a message to anyone saying that we're open-minded to, to going down this route.
Right.
I have a suggestion, just as a contractor, not as a board member, well, I guess as a board member, too, and just my opinion. I have a problem with the lock coverage, because we have been trying to stick to that. If you did a patio, a stone patio, or some type of pavers, with stairs going down to it, that wouldn't be considered lock coverage, because it's not a structure.
Right, I, I was trying to, one, avoid it, one, more costly, and, two, with the septic system there, I'm, I'm gonna be cantilevering the deck. I've, I've talked to my builder, he knows about, he has to move that back.
Pavers could be removed to get to the, and you could have a cover, you can move the pavers, so they don't have to be wet laid, they could be dry laid.
Right.
So you can get to the cover, I'm just trying to find a way to get you a patway around there.
We've turned down, we've turned down so many.
I know, one thing I'd like to add, mention, though, I, I would like a list of the, the last five houses that have gone in there. The last one, I think, was fifty-two percent lock coverage, for.
Me, and a variance was it, or a finding from this board?
What was existing there before?
It was, I, I believe it was a lot less than that.
As long as I've been on this board, I've never.
Never done that.
I mean, they allowed them to use, you know, a shed and, and other items like that, I mean, I, I don't wanna be argumentative.
I'd have to have the actual facts put in front of me, but as long as I've been on this board, even as an alternate, I don't remember anything ever getting approved. That's why, actually, I joined this board years ago, is to stop that type of thing from happening.
I mean, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a very unique street with.
Oh, it's a very tough street.
We know it very well.
We know it well, yeah.
It's, it's a tough, logistically, it's a tough street to work on.
I've just, yeah, I've, I've just been, you know, watching all the, the homes that have been going in there, and I, and I feel like what I'm trying to ask for is, is pretty minimal.
You know, I look at some of the foundations we put in, I'm like, this looks really big, but then you look at it on paper, it meets the lock coverage issue.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we go to the audience, like to hear from the audience, and we'll go, come back, we, we have some concerns, maybe we can work them out, I don't know. Anyone in the audience like to speak, please?
I'd like to speak.
Why don't you come up to the mic, please, and just give your name and your address, et cetera, please?
My name is Joan Pastuzik, I have owned the property across the street since nineteen ninety, just wanna speak in favor of this. I think that the design would be really aesthetically pleasing for his house, as well as the street. To drive down, that if you've driven down there, there's all sorts of houses, and I think his point was that one of the more recent builds used the front deck, the back deck, and the shed in order to get the size of the house that went up. This, by comparison, is a, a small deck that would give them some pleasure, easier to walk out of the house, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, please come up and give your name, and your address, please.
My name is Jean Rocko, I live at Two Wilsons Grove, so I'm directly next to Mr. Crosby. I feel that the deck would be a betterment, that it is, it would be of no concern of mine to have this deck built, I think it would make things, it would improve the visual of the house, and, and still not encroach upon anything that has to do with my property. I really feel like this is a small ask for what would be an improvement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
So the board has a dilemma.
Well, it's the president's.
I know.
That's my, as one board member, and we've been adamant about the lock coverage, and it's not like we're trying to pick on this piece of property.
No.
But as one board member, we allow it, and it's considerable change for a lot of the sons.
Everybody in the town.
Everyone that comes back and says.
Not just Pompanesas.
It's gonna, it's gonna, they're gonna come in and go, well, you let him do it, and that's what we're trying to, as one member, that's what we're trying to avoid.
I mean, the bylaw is there for a reason.
And we're just following the law, the way it's written, that's, we're volunteers, and we just try to follow what the bylaws say, that's all we're doing, we're not picking or any of that kind of stuff. I, I have an issue, and I'm pro-building, I'm as pro-building as you're gonna find, it's just, there is an option to do a patio, that won't be a lock coverage issue. I know the stairs will be different, you have to come down onto it, but.
I mean, one of the reasons why I pursued this, because I, I did question, you know, building inspection and conservation, and, and they pretty much, I, I kept putting more money into this, because I, I thought I was being a little guided that, you know, if I could get it through conservation, that it wouldn't be an issue. I wish I had known it was just a patio.
I don't know who guided you, but it wasn't the building commissioner, I know that.
Yeah, you didn't see the building commissioner, did you?
No.
Yeah, he turned.
Well, actually, actually, Dave Morrison?
Yeah.
Did talk to him. Talked to him and definitely showed him the plans.
Minimumly, I would recommend that you ask for an extension and see if you can do some more homework on this, maybe get some more Butters to come, I don't know what you can do. I, I've sat on this board for a long time, and I can tell you, we have been very tough in reference to lock coverage. So, and I understand, being the chair, where these members are coming from completely, I'm on the same page. Trying to figure out if there's a way to save this whole thing, I don't know if there is. You know, I wish there were thirty people sitting in the audience saying, you know.
I mean, I can get more, I could get those right down the street.
Well, and I don't know if that's gonna help your cause, I really don't, I mean, I probably shouldn't even have said that, because frankly, you'd have to get the whole town, really, because that one person says, hey, wait a second, you turned me down for the same situation.
We've turned down a lot of people.
And that's the problem.
On Wilsons Grove.
I mean. Yeah, we have. Yes, sir?
Is there any exception to this?
Well, see, the problem is that we, we as a board have been looked at more than once in reference to lock coverage, in reference to allowing McMansions in this community.
We've been sued.
And we've had many issues, and so we have tightened up the lock coverage issue, and, and I feel, I feel bad, frankly, because it sounds like the people that are mostly gonna be affected by this are saying, I'm in favor of it, I get it. Love to be able to say yay to it, but we are, we have marching orders, and those are, orders are, you know, when it comes to lock coverage, pay attention and don't, don't waver.
Wilsons Grove's a tough street, it's a really tough street, a really small lot.
Smallest street probably in the state, smallest lot.
And it's, it's, they're between a rock and a hard place, and I wish they had a bylaw that if somehow the Pompanesas Association could do something about Wilsons Grove, so they had a different lock coverage issue, but we don't have them.
Well, they do, they have twenty-five percent.
Well, they, they get more.
It sounds to me like the board is not gonna approve this, I would recommend a withdrawal, not a withdrawal, but an extension, and maybe sit down and we can have a conversation, maybe there's a way to work through this, I don't know. Maybe between you, building inspector, et cetera, maybe there's a way to get this done. I don't hold a lot of, a lot of, you know, faith in getting it done, but there's a possibility. And instead of just, if you ask this board for a vote tonight, it sounds like you're gonna get it denied. Am I correct in that presumption?
As one member, I.
Well, one, two, Billy, let's poll the board, Billy. So you polled the board, you got, you, you don't have an approval, so why don't you withdraw, why don't you ask for an extension, this is my recommendation, ask for an extension. Let's sit down with the zoning enforcement officer, more than happy to join that conversation, see if there's some way to come around to get this thing done that will satisfy you, you're probably gonna have to amend your plans substantially, but maybe there's another way to get this done.
Right, right.
I, I'm more than happy to spend some time.
That's the smart thing to do right now, for you guys.
I mean, I don't represent the board, but I'm, I know how the board feels, and maybe there's a way we can work around this, more than happy to spend the time.
And I think everybody on this board would like to see a way to work around this, so.
We're here for the community.
Yeah, but we do variances all the time on setbacks, and, you know, we have to have a hardship, they have to show a hardship. Lock cover, lock size, shape, topography, and you can show, and we do, we do variances all the time, because they show a hardship.
Just to throw it out there, what if, what if this deck and stairway is gonna be easier for my son with a prosthetic leg?
Well, let's, let's, I think, I think we could have that conversation with David.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking.
I know, I, I understand what you're.
Again, my recommendation would be is, is to ask for an extension, and presumably, we'd approve that. Set up a meeting with the zoning enforcement officer, ask me, I would more than be happy to attend, let's kick around some options. And I don't think now's the time, I think we can, I think there's some options out there that, that may or may not work, I don't know.
As a suggestion, if you're gonna talk to Dave, have him look at the ADA, and see if there is some type of.
I've been.
And it might be the type of thing where they say, yes, you can do it because of the situation, if you sell the house, you might have to remove it. Because it's not fair to be able to sell the house and keep it.
But there are some options, I think, that we can look at, that may not satisfy you, but let's, let's see what we can do.
Okay.
And I can also say that I can remember at least two cases, that we have approved certain things that we would normally not approve due to disabilities.
Right.
And if we can have that in there, why gotta prove that someone came back to us and said, well, why'd you let them go? It was a different situation.
I think, I think we want to sit down with David, myself, and let's see if we can work through this.
Okay.
So, would you like to ask for an extension?
I would like to ask.
Okay, so why don't we, is the next meeting available, or do you wanna?
Why don't we go out a month?
Go out until August, and that'll give us all time, me, you, and David. August fourteenth, acceptable to you, sir?
Yes.
All right. So can I get a motion to accept the extension, please, from the applicant?
Still moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all as a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so just reach out to Mary Ann or David and let them know what day I'm more than happy to come in and sit down with you and see if we can work through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we need to sign an ex... Let's not worry about it. All right. So Attorney Corain. Fifty-three Greenwood Road. Speak your piece, please.
Yeah, I don't, I just want to kind of make the board aware, I don't know if anybody watched the concert. So, this is coming before the zoning board on August fourteenth. It was before the Conservation Commission at their last meeting, and it was continued to August, their August twenty-second meeting. And a couple of the commissioners, at least one, and one was adamant, and one, you know, I think the other, some of the others kind of seconded it, said, you need to go to zoning and Board of Health first, which is not traditionally how I go.
It's not how we like it either.
And not how you like it.
They deny your application?
They continue it to August twenty-second. So my concern is, is that I may, you know, I may request a continuance from this board to August twenty, twenty-eighth, maybe? And they may go back and say, well, we want you to go to zoning first. They were, the, Cape Town Islands was the engineer on the project. They requested something from CONCOM in writing to request that zoning hear this before them. I don't know if that ever happened, and I doubt it probably did.
We would have questioned it.
Right.
Chris, you know that we've always...
Believe me. That's why I'm here.
I discussed this with our past...
At least ten years. Right, no, I agree.
I discussed this with past town council, we were gonna have to deal with, but then it went, it went moot for a while.
Right.
You were getting decisions by Conservation without this board.
Right.
So I don't, so if we have to go back to town council, I'll go to the new town council and argue this in front of them too.
Right. And maybe it's just a, maybe it's just a coordination between David and Drew prior to this. It may be a moot point, because I think that the applicant's trying to request the CONCOM hearing prior. But I just wanted to make the board aware, I mean, it was clear from the hearing, I watched it, saying, you know, we want you to have this one go before zoning, so.
Well, I can tell you, as chair, I can tell you right now, it is my opinion, you've gotta seek Conservation first.
And that's...
Am I correct in that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You got the consensus of this board, you need Conservation first.
That's, and that's, I'm fine with that.
Because if you notice, we've been conditioning everything in the following way, any changes to the plan. So if they change a shrub, you gotta come back to this board. I don't want to go there, that's insanity.
Believe me.
Stupidity.
I agree a hundred percent. I'm always on the side, you know, with you guys on how this process works, but as I said, it came up in the hearing, so I wanted to make this board aware of it.
Paul Easton.
So that's...
I'm more than happy to join into that discussion if you'd like.
Yeah, I may follow up with Conservation, you know, saying we had this discussion.
Feel free to do so, you've heard, you've heard the opinion of the board.
Is there water down there? It's not near the ocean, right?
It's in, it's technically in the flood zone. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The ocean's across the Great Neck Road.
It is technically in the flood zone.
What's, what's the name of that development?
It's Greenwood, it's in Pompanessett.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's not, it's not Greens, Greenwood, it's Greenwood.
Greenwood is on, off of...
It's off a shore drive.
I'm not...
Greenwood.
I'm thinking of Great Neck Road south.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is Greenwood, it's in Pompanessett.
Well, keep us apprised of the, of the outcome, please. We're more than happy to get involved.
As I said, I just kind of wanted to bring it to the board's attention, because, you know.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
And I would, on that Nahoya one?
Yes.
I'm guessing, because it was one seventy-four thirty-three, that's why Dave threw it to you guys, because probably within fifty feet of a wetland resource area.
Yeah, which is fine, we worked through it. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, next is your interview, discussion, recommendation in reference to Mr. Mike Milbury. Please come forward.
We got interviewed. Well, I have an interview question.
Do we have questions?
Is it in your packet?
Mike, are you ready?
Well, after watching Mr. Haney's Perry Mason interview, I'm a little nervous.
I almost nodded off out there, didn't even recognize you when you came up and looking for the door. I'm like, have you walked away? No, that was Mike. You're welcome.
Is that an unusually long presentation?
But you gotta understand, so as a board, we have to give people the right to speak. You have a right, constitutional right to speak.
Doesn't it, isn't there a qualifier for intelligently?
Well, how far can that person go, right? There's a fine line, and...
There's some people in this town that...
I'm not gonna, I try not to cut people off, I try to be very, very... So, you want to be in this board?
Well, my friend, Mr. Furbish over there, and I don't see Bob Caziano or Charlie Reedy here tonight, but we occasionally get together for dinner and more, and we started talking about things. I'm, I've got time on my hands, I'm president of the Phase One Homeowners Association in New Seabury. Recently appointed to the Finance Committee. And just talking to these guys, they said, you know, we have a need for somebody. I'm not gonna tell you that I'm a contractor, I know building codes, and and I took a look at the bylaws and I almost closed the book immediately. It looked, it was a little overwhelming, but I guess with time and commitment, you get to know the rules, and I think a lot of this, from what I gathered here, was about kind of being fair. I mean, trying to make sure that you're, you're offering, I mean, that was an interesting case in point, why I wanted to know why this guy couldn't get a little bit more lot cover. I understand your, your past history with it, but...
We've been sued for giving out larger lot coverage.
And we have been questioned by a lot of people in our community, why can you allow something that the community really doesn't want to see? Why do you allow lot coverage to exceed the approved amount?
There were some homes built, especially in New Seabury, Waterway, the street Waterway in particular, that this developer, he got them approved before we were on the board. I mean, these massive McMansions that are all over, like three in a row, and people just went up in arms.
And where is that?
Waterway is the street in New Seabury.
Yeah.
It's in Bright Coast.
But it's not covered by the special permit.
Yeah.
So the question that the applicant you're bringing up, so how can we separate, so for me, how do I separate that from every other application? So I can defend, if we were to approve the extension, if we can, how do we defend him when we've said no to others?
Right.
So we have to think that through. There might be a way, there may not be a way.
I'm hoping that ADA...
Yeah, that seemed like a good path, good possibility.
Because now we have something to back us. So if someone comes to us later and goes, why'd you let him do it? I want to have a big duck on the back of my house, I, you know, I want more space. Well, here's a different situation, his son's gotta press the...
I mean, you understand, so Mr. Corain, Chris Corain, the attorney, was sitting in the back of the room, sitting there listening, I'm sure, very attentively, because he comes to this board all the time about increase in lot coverage, and we've said, no, 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 no.
He would love to have heard us say.
Yes.
We've had builders...
It comes every single week.
Does he?
Yes.
We've had builders build houses too tall, above the thirty feet, and they've come back and said, ah, we made a mistake, can we just have it?
No.
Take it down.
You knowingly did it. You knew you were over. Sorry.
But we do try to be fair. We try to, we try to put ourselves in other people's positions, just like we should, I think, and we try to work through situations, as you saw. We're gonna try and work through it. Now, we may not, but we're gonna try. It's all I can do.
Well, anyway, I'm, I've had a varied career, been busy until recently. And now I'm kind of branching out, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm here full-time. I don't have a second home anyplace else, although sometimes in January I wish I did. But, so, I'm not the kind of guy that likes to just sit on my hands, I'd rather get busy, and I'm, I'm a bad golfer.
There you go, join the crowd.
You know, this board just needs level-headed people. That's, and that's, this is the great board.
Well, I haven't hit anybody with a shoe in a long time.
I wasn't gonna bring it up, I'm sure you did.
Remember it well.
Because there might be times you think about it. As a contractor, I was asked by a former building commissioner to join this board, and I was kind of against it, being a contractor, I was in a conflict, so I stepped down on a lot of things, if I'm, anyway, I've talked to the people, if I'm involved in the project, obviously. But when I first looked at those bylaws, I was overwhelmed too. As a contractor, I was overwhelmed.
It used to allow overwhelm.
Almost everybody here walked in knowing nothing about...
So, it evolves. Especially as an alternate, you watch, you listen, you make comments, kind of like you made, you made out there, it was a great comment. And it'll all come, it'll just, it'll just come. And you're gonna start seeing the same stuff repetitive that we're seeing, and you're gonna say, oh, I see where they're coming from.
John brought me on the board eighteen years ago, and I said to him, I don't know anything about this, and he said, just come in and shut up. Listen and learn, and that's what I did for the first year, year and a half.
Yeah, don't even bother to read the book, because it'll make no sense.
Did you?
It'll make no sense.
You'll get your zoning bylaw, and you'll just start tabbing pages so that you don't have, so you can go back to them easy. So that you can, yeah, that's what'll happen. It happens to all of us.
And being that I'm a home builder, I can look at, while they're talking about setbacks and all that, I'm looking at the house plans and looking for discrepancies.
Figuring out stuff for the house.
Yeah, making sure that what they're putting in front of us makes sense.
We've, we've quite a diverse board here. We have a school teacher, we have a contractor, we have a developer, cupped three salespeople, and Charlie was a lawyer, and Bob Caziano was a flower guy. So, I mean, we've had a lot, very diverse.
Flower child.
You'll, you'd enjoy it.
We had a doctor.
You get a certain amount of flack from people too, though. It happens.
I'm used to that. I've been used to that for the last fifty years.
So you know my cousin Dennis Bonvey?
I sure do.
Yes.
He's a good guy.
That's Cousin Dennis.
Tough kid.
Yeah. Well, we're all from Nova Scotia, into Guinevere.
Is he a hockey player?
Yeah, he was. He was, he, not big, but bull-like.
He is the number one penalty receiver in the NHL. Do you know that?
Number one what? Penalty receiver?
Yeah.
I mean, somebody committed a foul against him?
Exactly, in the NHL.
Do you have anything?
That's because...
What penalties does anyone else in NHL?
He was, he was not fun to play against.
More than Nick Patel?
Nick was, was a tough kid, obviously, but Dennis was a yapper. He was a yapper, it's just like, just like Marshand kind of, you know, just get under your skin. So you just wanted to give him a backhand, but, but he could back it up. He could back it up.
Well, let's not get off track. I'm, I'm sorry, I even brought it up.
No problem.
Should we go over some of these questions?
Sure, no question, let's do it, let's do it.
We have to fill out these forms here?
We do.
We do have to fill out forms.
Do I have to do that tonight?
Well, listen, there is a process, if we don't follow it, we're gonna...
Do it while we're doing it, now?
Mary Ann, we have to do this all tonight?
I do, or this does.
Mike, are you available for the scheduled meetings twice a month, except November and December, for the most part?
For the most part, yes.
Well, I actually looked at the Bruin schedule, and I don't think he has any classes.
Okay.
Because it was posted this week.
It was.
And you're aware of your role and responsibility if you join the board?
I think I'm generally aware.
There you go. Look at this, this is easy.
Did the competent, did the applicant appear competent and qualified?
Yes, sir.
I think so.
Am I supposed to answer? Can I answer that for myself?
Well, we should add, does he have any public speaking abilities?
Oh, my God.
Okay.
Better than all of us.
All right.
Can it appear competent?
I'm good with you, Mike.
I'm good.
I'm good too.
I'm good.
Bill Blaisdell.
Oh, that's... Oh, I got it. You can't put yours?
It's actually, it's actually very interesting. You get a lot of interesting stuff, and you learn a lot.
And it's not an issue if you, I can't make it that day, I got something going on, I'm gonna go see some friends. We have two members not, two members aren't here today? I have two members not here today. Not everybody's here each time. In the winter, I bounce down to Florida quite a bit, so.
So we all agree, one to five is a five, right? Yep. There you go.
I haven't either, where is that?
Right down there.
No problem.
Right there.
I didn't get down that far yet.
What do, what do all these say?
Good.
Interview date, what is, seven, ten?
No, I did all that.
All right.
Twenty-four?
Yes, yes. You still have to go in front of the, uh, selectmen?
Yes.
Same thing.
Yes. Yes.
Don't forget the scale, one through five?
Where, where's it?
Five, five being good.
So you want, so at the top, it's gonna be Mike Milbury, it's gonna be ZBA after, and the second question, interview dates today. Evaluated would be you, right? And then you go, yes, 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 unless you want to change that. One to five, you evaluate the way you want, sign it. You're done.
Put a number in.
Right? There you go.
So, do these things get put on air sometime?
You're on air right now.
You're on air right now.
Wave. You're on...
That's the camera right there.
Exactly.
Right behind you.
There's one right behind your head, too.
And it's recorded.
Channel eight.
Yep.
We have a large audience.
Both of them.
So you have any other questions, issues or concerns?
I don't. I mean, I've talked to these guys at, you know, over dinners a number of times, and they said, you know, it would be interesting, it'd be fun. I claim no building background, but I, you know, I've got time and I've got motivation, so.
A little common sense, all you need.
Yeah, level head and common sense, listen to the facts, and...
Well, it sounds like the majority, if not all, of the board's gonna recommend you to the selectmen, it's up to them now. I presume they will approve you, I can't speak for them, and there you go. You'll start as an associate.
And when will that select?
It's at their public meetings on Monday usually, right? It's probably a couple of weeks out, at the earliest, I would guess.
Yeah, you're not gonna see your first meeting for at least a month, I would think.
All right.
When's the next, uh...
August what?
Board of Selectmen. Can we get that on the agenda?
It's up to them, but it should be.
Can you talk to them, Mary Ann?
I know before I was approved, I'm pretty sure I came to one or two meetings and just sat on the side and listened, that was the building...
But when you're approved, you, well, presumably you'll be approved, and you'll be an associate, and you'll start, and so you'll be reading motions and things of that nature, like George is doing now. If you notice what George did tonight?
Yes.
You'll be doing things like that, and then you will move up as other members move off.
You can ask questions and make comments no matter what.
You're, you, you treat associate members, you can ask any questions you want, you're part of the board.
He even just need clarification or something, just...
And when a full member is absent, then associate member takes place, and what we try to do is rotate. So if one member's absent, so that means there's four regular members, we then take the associates and we rotate them that night, so you get, you'll be sitting on, on meetings almost immediately.
But even if you're not sitting actively voting, you can still comment and ask questions and everything.
It's great. I mean, you're, you'll be involved right from the get-go.
And the pay is wonderful.
Yeah, perfect.
It doubles every year.
Yes.
Plus bonus.
Yes, you get that, oh, I can't call it.
Will you just recycle all those plans that you picked up this afternoon?
All a bunch of, all a bunch of dead trees.
Which she does, with them, I don't.
It's still on the air, by the way.
Yes. So I thank you very much for coming in, and we look forward to you becoming a member.